Okay, uh, I'd like to call to order the April 5th, 2021 planning and double committee meeting, and let's start with a roll call, and when I call your name, please answer. Let's see, Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Franny.
Here.
Uh, Director Katrina.
I'm here.
Yeah, unmute, uh, let's see, uh, let's see, Senior Planner Carl DeSimis.
Here.
And Michelle Thomas.
I am here.
And Bob Larson.
I'm here, Mr. Chair, I think I'm getting some feedback from someone's microphone.
Okay.
I don't know who's the IP.
I don't know where it's coming from me, hold on a minute, let me adjust things a little bit. Okay, hopefully that's a little better. It's not better. Okay, still.
If we could have everybody mute unless you're speaking, that would be great.
Okay. Let's see, is everybody muted but me? You got it now? Better? Okay, great, fantastic. Okay, we were up to our visitor here, Gary Glenn from the Downtown Waterfront Alliance Parking Group. Gary, welcome. And I think we have, oh, wait a minute, Paul Rice, uh, just say here, Paul.
Here.
We're going through a roll call. Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, we've got a forum. Uh, for openers, we need approval of our March 1, 2021 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
I can't.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved, fantastic. Okay, agenda items, you all should have an agenda in front of you, and we're going to start off with, with Gary Glenn and the Downtown Waterfront Alliance Parking Analysis. Uh, and I guess Carl, you're up for the next two on the growth target allocation update, and then also on the, I don't know whether they call it affordable or attainable, they use the words interchangeably lately, uh, uh, group. And then on council comments, um, I'd like to just sneak in right now, we won't do it now, but we'll do it when we get to it, the, the variances discussion, I'd sent you a thing, Katrina, on variances, and you sent me back, I think everybody back, a, an informative crib sheet on what all is included in type two and type three variances, okay? So I'd like to go through that in some detail when we, we get to that point. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Gary Glenn, on the Downtown Waterfront Alliance Parking Analysis. And by the way, thank you for sending out the, the slideshow ahead of time, I read through it three days ago.
Okay, you're certainly welcome, a couple of questions, and can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Can you see the screen where it shows the first slide? Can everybody see the slide on the screen?
No.
No.
Okay, uh, maybe, uh, whoops.
Gary, if you hit the green share screen.
I did hit the share, I did hit the share screen, but let's go back to it.
Michelle, could you pull it up, just in case Mr. Glenn's not able to get it up on the screen?
Yeah, I'm trying, I was doing minutes at the same time.
Let me get that open up. See. See it? It's.
Yeah, just tap it once.
Well, it's not there. Here. See, I hit share, I'll try to get it.
Then you should have to confirm, a share, click on the screen you want to share. Okay.
Okay, can anybody see the screen now?
Yes.
Okay, let's get it. There we go, okay. Uh, it's such a glorious day, I hope I don't bore you to death with a bunch of numbers. Uh, you know, I know Bob Hines has participated in, in the past, so he knows how this is done, is done, but what I'm going to try to do is explain the procedure, how long we've done this, and some of the things we've seen this year compared to past years when we've done this, and, uh, so, you know, in terms of our objectives in doing this survey, we started out back in 2010 to really determine what the supply of parking was available, and the city actually came to Steve Lynn at that time, who was the first president of the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, and asked if the alliance could help, and that was actually the first thing that I participated on with the alliance, is doing that parking survey. Since that time, we've done surveys right up until this year, and we look at what the utilization of the parking is, and we try to look at it, how it varies by weekday and weekend, we look at how it varies during a day, running from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and we try to look at the differences between winter and summer, which is really the peak visitor time, and over the, over the years, we've learned there's quite a different pattern during a day, weekend, weekday, and during the summer, and the intent is to provide information for, uh, public policy decisions, and so, I mean, we certainly believe in providing factual empirical data for making these decisions, and we've got a long series of data that will, uh, show that information. In 2010, 15, and 17, we mostly focused on sly, supply and partial utilization. Uh, when it came to 2018 and beyond, we've every year done a summer and a winter survey, and a weekend and a weekday, and the previous surveys, we didn't do all those every year, and so we do it generally in either February or March for the winter, and then in August for the summer. Uh, this year, we also added utilization of private marina and church lots, which, uh, I'll show you some of the data, but it's quite interesting. The first thing we did is identified, uh, various waterfront districts to summarize the data, and I'll show you what these districts are in just a minute, but it, for example, it includes downtown, Finn Hall, Millville, et cetera. Uh, we recruit and train volunteers, uh, every year, or every time we do the survey, we have a dozen or 15 different volunteers, that between them and with tabulation, spend about 30 man-hours, and so what the volunteers do is they go out and drive a planned route, and record the number of vehicles that are parked in each zone, and we do that every two hours, starting at 7:00 AM, and then ending at 9:00 PM, and then again, we do it on a weekend and a weekday, and the weekday is most always Thursday, uh, and then we do it in either February, March, and again in the summer. Uh, we tabulate to identify those patterns, and we've usually made presentations to the city, sometimes to the council, sometimes to a subcommittee, and at times, we participate in policy reviews, and let me show you some of the route maps and forms we use. So this is the route map, the areas that we cover, so you can see the districts, Finn Hall, Museum, Millville, Downtown, and Judson, and there are sub-areas within each of these. Uh, I put a few things on this map to kind of indicate why we really, or how we looked at the private parking and the marina parking, the Ps are fairly major, uh, private parking areas, and the Ms are marinas, uh, we also look at the yacht club, and then the churches that are nearby, but not quite in the district, the three major churches. This is the, uh, form that we use for recording that, so we start at Pioneer and Harborview.
Is it possible to enlarge that? I'm not sure.
The survey form?
Yeah, just on the screen.
The one that's on the screen. Might be beyond my skill mix.
That's okay.
Mayor, you can, um, adjust it under, on your own screen, under view options at the top, you can click that and go to zoom ratio and choose 100% or 150%, and then you can move it around with the little hand to, um.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay.
Sorry, Gary.
Okay, all right, let me, and, uh, so, and, uh, there's not a lot of information here, it's just that what happens is a person, a person, a driver and recorder go around in a car, and they go through a zone, the first which is between Harborview and Terre Boucher, and simply record the number of cars parked on the left and the number on the right. Uh, when these are tabulated, we know there are 10 spots on the left and seven on the right, and so we go through the whole area, driving this route, recording the number of cars left and right, and that information is tabulated essentially using a spreadsheet. This is a lot of, uh, a lot of words, but don't worry about it, but this is just a list of all the private parking lots, and we've gone through and looked at how many cars they can handle, so we do a similar thing with the private church and marina parking lots, but we're only recording it at 7:00 AM, 1:00 PM, and, uh, or 7:01 and 7:00 PM, so we do it three times a day instead of all of the times, so we pick kind of the base level, which is 7:00 AM, uh, when not much is really happening, the peak time, which is, uh, 1:00 PM, and then 7:00 PM, you still have a lot of downtown activity. Now, this is what the total supply of parking actually looks like, and it's rather staggering, there are 2,613 stalls when you add all this together. Now, again, the churches are not quite in the downtown area, but there are 415 close by parking spots in the churches. You can see we have marinas at a 324 slots, and they're kind of spread between the districts that we survey, 1,366 private slots, and 508 public. In the past surveys, we've been focusing on the public, but when you look at this, what's interesting is that's only 19% of the supply downtown, so we have way more of the other things. Private lots alone are about half the supply. Now, these graphs, uh, show the percentage of spots used by time of day, so if you look at the first, uh, on the left, you'll see the very top, which is, uh, the purple one is Saturday, and so it shows it's starting out at close to 10% at 7:00 AM, and it, it's almost always close to 10%, 10 or 12%, it peaks out at about 1:00 PM, and that's the normal peak downtown. Over the years, as we've looked at this, the, the, uh, heavy utilization has lasted later in the day. If you look at the two graphs to the right, this is actually, uh, downtown and Finn Hall, so you'll see, in this year's survey, the blue line on the bottom is the total area that we surveyed, the red and the green are Finn Hall and Downtown. These two areas are the most heavily utilized for parking, they also have a peak that spreads throughout the afternoon, probably driven by the restaurant business largely, but other things, and so they stay fairly busy until about 7:00 at night. I'll talk a little bit more about what's happened, yes, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, yeah, I had my hand, I, can you see the raise hand deal, or?
I can, I can, I can, sorry, I missed it, go ahead.
Could you go back two slides, please?
Sure.
One more?
Is that the one?
No, one more back?
Yes.
What is the, uh, no, next one forward?
Yep.
Yeah, what, what is the, uh, map?
Well, it's just ways that we've helped direct people on how to do that. Uh, at times, we've drawn maps to help with this, uh, over the time, what we've normally done is in training a person, they go out as a recorder first, so they learn the route, but that was a time when we actually had a map they could refer to, we haven't been using that this year, but that's all that refers to.
Okay, thank you.
You're certainly welcome, please do raise your hand or yell at me at any time, I can see your faces and your hands. So here again, we can see kind of the peaks, now I'll talk a little bit about, uh, what's happened in the last couple of years, particularly as COVID has impacted this, but you obviously see the higher utilization in downtown and Finn Hall, Saturday is, uh, higher than Thursday almost always, and you'll see that we're, we're down from 2019, particularly on Saturday, and I'll show you some specifics on this. Uh, this is the change over the last few years in parking, and so you're going to see 7:00 AM, 1:00 PM, and 7:00 PM, and so if we just look at the red lines, that's 1:00 PM for the whole area, not any particular district, so back in 2018, we had 58% of all the stalls being used, the public stalls, and that 2018 at 1:00 PM, it went up to 59% in 2019, and the general, general trend has been higher utilization. 2020, the COVID impact, we dropped to 43%. Uh, Saturdays, uh, dropped significantly in later times did, as restaurants were closed, and you can see the early morning is kind of a base level, which is the blue line, and nothing really affects that, a lot of that is people that are parking near their houses that live downtown, and then they leave to work, but at 7:00 AM, you don't see many workers or customers coming downtown. You can see a significant impact in 2020 of the COVID restrictions on the green line, which is 7:00 PM. Uh, the restaurants were probably most devastatingly hit by the shutdown at that time, and you can see there's about a 66% decrease, where midday it dropped 27%. Now, in 2021, you can see if we look at the midday, it's gone from 50, 43% utilization up to 56%, but we're still about 20% below what we were in 2019, and, uh, Saturday is, uh, is not, uh, described here, but it's impacted even more, so there's been quite an impact of COVID, which is, I'm sure, no surprise. Now, this is, uh, a little busy, but it's the results by district, and so you'll see all of the districts portrayed here, so if you just kind of glance across, you see Museum is probably the lowest utilized of all the areas in terms of percentage of stalls, and it varies a little bit by time of day, Millville would be the second most. One thing that's always been interesting in our surveys is that downtown gets very heavily utilized, we get up to 75% in the middle of the day, uh, we'll get up in some areas up to where it's fully occupied, but there's usually spaces available in Millville, not very far, I mean, in Judson, not very far away, and also some in Millville, so part of the, we see these high-use areas, but there are always areas that have some availability even for public parking.
So, uh.
Now, here, go ahead.
Sir, the, the last two slides, tho, those were, uh, strictly referring to public parking, no marina, no churches.
Yes, Jim, this is, this is public, all the ones so far are public only, yes, you're correct, and that's been our focus in the past. So here's, here's a summary of what we found in looking at public, private, marina, and church, and so you'll see public here, if we look at Thursday on the top line, at 1:00 PM, we were 56% occupied, and we dropped down to 32% at 7:00 PM. Uh, if we look at private stalls, they were 35% at 1:00 PM, and this is all of them added together, we could break them out, but that would include things like Peninsula Shopping Center, it would include the Shoreline, uh, customer parking, all the private stalls added together. The marinas at 1:00, 1:00 PM were at 28%, churches, which are a little out of area, but obviously are, are not used too much during the week, so they were at 6%, and so one of the most interesting things of looking at this is how much there is available, and it raises questions about, for employee parking, are there things we can work out that help utilize these as opposed to paving more land? I mean, it really raises that question. On Saturday, you'll see other trends, marinas tend to be a little more utilized on the weekend, and when we do the, uh, August survey, we'll see that marinas again are even more used in the summer, uh, but during the week, uh, they're fairly lightly used, and, uh, I don't know the exact number of employees downtown, but I would guess it's north of 500, and so there's a significant employee component to this parking, and if we listen to complaints from, uh, merchants, it's usually that some other merchants parking in front of their store, and so it's kind of a hot button issue. So here again, we see the high utilization of public, but a lot of other areas in terms of potential. Now, just a, a few observations from looking at that, uh, people complain about parking all the time. Uh, I have an office building, the Harbor Center downtown, and more often than not, when I get a call from a tenant, it's because somebody's parked in front of their store that doesn't belong there, and I know that on the council and with the city, those, those complaints frequently come, so people are always concerned about that, but I think in looking at this data, we need to look at the big picture and kind of managing this. Uh, the supply is more than sufficient, it's just not always in the right place, and sometimes it's fairly close by, uh, if we look up on Judson and it's not utilized, whatever we can do with signage to encourage people to use what is available, if we had the right to use some of the private parking, uh, that is close by, if we look behind what used to be called the Willis Building, there's a lot of parking there, except during the peak employee times, and so is there the possibility of allowing people to use that during off-peak times? You know, I mentioned, I think there are 500 or so employees, and part of what we want to do with our parking supply is avoid conflicts with visitors and customers, and so, uh, it'd be nice if we allowed places for employees to park elsewhere. One of the places with permission that really makes some sense, if you look at some of the downtown marinas, uh, like Pleasure Craft and Harborview, marina tenants don't really want the places away from the dock, during the week, they're lightly used, but if you look at along the street, there's a row of stalls that are almost never used, and it raises the question, could there be with some degree of control stickers in people's windows, maybe they'd pay something, maybe they wouldn't, uh, and with signage that we would take some of the offload, some of the public places, uh, to put people into some of those, or maybe even also some of the church lots? Uh, another thing in looking at parking is, you know, what is the town character, and I think looking at the town character is the most important thing to do first, if we're really want a compact downtown area that reflects our history, we want it so it's a nice place to walk, sit, and hang out, and so having parking places that are not right there, but nearby, where people can walk down there and enjoy that, is a model that a lot of cities are going to, it's very costly, as you know, to create more parking by acquiring land and paving, paving spaces for that, how much should cars dominate in doing that? And do, and create, using some of the non-public parking, uh, it really involves partnerships, it means having a dialogue with organizations like the alliance and with private owners to better utilize existing parking stalls of all types. I mean, the churches are just incredibly, uh, low in use, uh, just because it was so interesting, I went and surveyed them on a Sunday as well, and even on that, the morning is heavily used, and the early mass and the other services in the morning, but in the afternoon, they're very lightly used, so it's, it's, uh, it's a resource for the community. Uh, we'll be doing a summer survey again in August, and this will give us a better picture of the current use, particularly when we see more of, uh, getting COVID-19 more behind us, uh, you know, we hope this continues, but everything says now that we're likely to see lower incidence and fewer restrictions in the summer, and it'll be interesting to see what that means in terms of our real parking load at that time. So I'd be glad to answer any questions or discussions, uh, we'll make any data that we have available to the city, uh, and we'd be glad to meet with anybody that would like to use it.
Okay, Jim, you've had your hand up, and, uh, Mayor, you'll be right behind Jim. That was up in error, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor?
Yeah, Gary, I, I got, uh, distracted in the last couple of years, but before, with a few other basic things, but before that, I was reaching out to the churches, and I was asking to see if the churches were, were, uh, open with the idea of maybe leasing, having the city lease their, some of their back spots during off-peak church times. I didn't have a lot of, uh, and I had some friends that helped me with this, I did have a lot of, uh, movement with the Mormon, with the Mormon church, um, I can't exactly remember the, the Chapel Hill, what they said, but the Methodist Church on Pioneer, which is, uh, is very close to downtown, they were, they were open with considering this, and you know, if you go over to their back side of their lot, where the basketball is, there's not, there, it's almost never got people in there, so, um, I think that's probably the best thing that the city and maybe the community could do is, uh, approach the churches and see if there's a way that maybe the city could lease part of their property at the right time, and maybe even, I'm sorry, there's an echo, I don't know how this echo is, but maybe, maybe it's a matter of, they get there, you know, there's a gate somewhere, and if they get their, their, uh, their tickets stamped at a local store, then it waives their fee, but anyway, is that something that, have you ever approached any of those churches on anything like that?
Uh, we have not, we did have a discussion with, uh, one of the marinas, uh, several years ago during Chuck Hunter's term, and, uh, I think our learning from that is it's a, it's a process, I think you have to have a dialogue, see what their concerns are, but I agree with your conclusion, the Methodist Church, there are already quite a few employees that park right below the church on Edwards, and so it's a place that will, people are willing to do, uh, you know, in the summer, there's potential trolley access, uh, so I mean, and there's a huge number of stalls that are almost never used there, and so I think having a dialogue with some creativity, and it'll probably take some time to have a dialogue, and I don't know what incentives you need, I don't know if some people are concerned about liability issues, but I would certainly think it would be good for us to work through these issues, and if we could offload some of that employee parking, it would make a big difference.
Sure, well, we'll work hard, you know, uh, there's a lot of things I want to try to get accomplished before my term's up, and, uh, that is one of those priorities, and that's the biggest way of trying to relieve some of that, so we'll try to work with that with council, and see if we can get some movement on that for the, for everyone downtown.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess I'm up here, uh, yeah, a potential conflict of interest, but I've been working on the inside from the Methodist Church, and, uh, uh, this is something that's been talked about quite a bit as a matter of fact, and I agree with you, I think it's, it's, uh, it's time is just about come, the, uh, when I chaired the trustees there, we were, we were almost on the brink, and, uh, we've done it before on things like, uh, Gig Fest and things like that, when we said, hey, we can, we can open up a lot of space, in fact, there's room in a crunch, you can put almost 200 cars in there, okay? It's a, it's a pretty big facility, some of them may be on the grass, but, uh, 200 cars can go in there, so, yeah, I, I agree, I think it's, uh, definitely, uh, an opportunity there. It's, it's, it's a little out of the way versus the need, I think, right now, particularly with the openings down on Judson, but, uh, in the future, it's something we may, um, the other one, and, 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 I've talked about it, with the, uh, opening of the Anchish Park, uh, that one's going to be an interesting one, particularly with, uh, both the kayak club and the, uh, private citizens that go there to launch their kayaks, and, uh, use the park facilities there, which may, it's going to be a new demand, not there right now, but it's going to be there, probably not this year in any major form, but next spring and next summer, a year from now, a year from this coming summer, uh, that's probably going to be a high-growth, I think, and that's just my personal opinion, I think Councilmember Franny thinks that way, too, uh, but that's one of the areas that we probably ought to look at in the future, uh, what, what does it look like now, and what does it look like after Anchish happens, okay, and gets rolling, what does that thing look like? So just kind of a heads up.
You know, the, uh, the private lot that makes the most potential sense, and again, there are issues of all of these, but is the yacht club. Uh, the yacht club is a fairly large lot that's seldom used, but here again, you'd have to put people's mind at ease that there's not going to be a problem, maybe. But here again, you'd have to put people's mind at ease that there's not going to be a problem, maybe only part of it, it's done on a controlled basis. But I agree that that's, that's a potentially tough area, the cars coming down there to drop off kids with kayaks or bring kayaks or the other things that happen. But there's not a lot of relief, it's hard to find a spot down in that area.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mayor, you're on.
One potential, I've got to really zoom into this, let's see. One potential we're hoping to be able to utilize is over for Anshish, is is one of those side streets, is to do some angled parking there on one of those side streets. Not far where you live, Gary, there's, there is a public right-of-way that is, is the city that we could actually use some, we could actually do some, some angled parking. And that's kind of where we had planned to relieve some of the parking at Anshish. So we'll be able to go over that more later, but hopefully that would leave some of that.
What street are you talking about, Mayor?
I can't point it out right now, I'm looking at it.
Are you talking about Novak?
I think, I think that's what he's talking about. That was referenced in the study that was done for the commercial fishing.
Right, right. So is Novak?
But there's already angled parking on one side of Novak.
Yes, but it's only on the very front part where the garden, where that landscaping is, correct? If you look at that attractive landscaping.
Right, that's Vanovich property.
Right, if you go right past that, that next piece, right past that, doesn't have angled parking.
That's true.
And that is, that was identified.
Well, I, you know, I mean, I know that Mr. Glenn lives in the Millville condominium, so he's very well familiar with that area as well as I am. That angle parking goes down to the, I believe, the entrance to some residences, and then there's some entrances, then you kind of start dropping down toward Malach's dock, so I don't know how many exactly spots you think you're going to get in there on an angle basis, there may be a few more of them parallel down there at the end, but I don't know.
Right, just, just pass that entrance to, to just pass that driveway entrance, as you said, is, is city right-of-way before you get down towards that dock, where you probably could get the same amount as in the front.
There's, you know, there's a significant hill right next to that, the terrain is difficult. And, you know, the existing angle parking goes, as Councilman Franch pointed out, down to where it's access to the condos across the street. I think you'd be hard pressed to get angled parking, that's just my opinion in there. You might get two or three straight, you know, non, but that's about it, there's not a lot of room there. We have been regularly serving, surveying Novak, and so we know what the current use is. So we could help and go back and look at that and see what's been going on in the past.
Right, and I think there's a chance that that was thought of when they do the home port, actually, down the road. I think that's, that's where that was identified for, where do you put some of the home port, but anyway.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest, again, there's fairly limited, there's a little bit, but fairly limited potential down there, fairly limited.
And it probably has a steepness like you mentioned, Gary.
Yeah, it's steep going up from the road, but the road itself also starts getting steep when it goes down towards Ken Malach's Marina.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, thank you very much, Gary, for the presentation enlightening. Sort of like we've been in a time warp period for the last year. Back to the future here, 2019. Yeah, I think business will be picking up this summer, and then by next spring, hopefully, things are back to normal, whatever normal is. So we'll see. But again, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, and let me know if you need any help on anything else, and I appreciate your inviting me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, let's see, moving right along. Growth target allocation update, Carl DeSimis, you're on.
Thank you, Councilmember Hives. Should we wait and see if we can get the screen unshared here, or does it make any difference to anybody? Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Yeah, so this is just our, our monthly update. We've been trying to bring back kind of how this growth allocation process has been progressing. And I think the last time we met, we discussed the fact that the Pierce County Consultant was going to be coming back to the Growth Management Coordinating Committee and presenting kind of a status report on where we are in the process. And that, that did happen, and there was some, there was quite a bit of discussion at Growth Management Coordinating Committee, and really it sort of devolved into a discussion between the Puget Sound Regional Council and Pierce County, and trying to sort out what they're going to do when and if these growth allocation numbers are greater, sorry, the shares are greater than the actual allocations. And so that's, that's kind of where that discussion ended up. There was, there was definitely discussion about the persons per household. And all of the, all of the jurisdictions are kind of focused in on that number as we have been, I'm sorry, Councilmember Franch.
Well, go ahead, Carl, I'll let you finish your thought.
Okay, thank you. And so we did discuss the persons per household, and HBL increased those persons per household kind of across the board, but they also decreased the persons per household number across the board based on Puget Sound Regional Council's regional average persons per household. And so we've been discussing with, with HBL, we like the number that they had increased it to, which was 2.2 persons per household, and that's up from 1.86, which is where we were in the 2030 process. And you know, if you'll recall, when we started this process for 2044, we were at about 2.16. So, so we like that 2.2 number, they wanted to decrease it down to 2.08, which we, again, we don't think is, this doesn't seem correct. So we're letting HBL know that we're, we're liking moving forward with the 2.2 number. And we'll be letting them know that this Wednesday, there's another meeting. So there hasn't been another meeting with the Cities and Towns Geography since we last spoke, there was just that GMCC meeting, and they have not had another meeting. I surmise that's because Pierce County and PSRC have been meeting in the background to try and work out some differences, which, from what I understand, they have come to some sort of an agreement, and I expect to hear more about that on Wednesday. And then I can report that back to the group here. We're still awaiting the Buildable Lands Report from the county, so we still don't have that. So we don't really have a capacity analysis, a current capacity analysis that would support these numbers. We, the last I heard on that, we were supposed to be getting it at the end of March. And so we're just into April here, so I, again, we're meeting GMCC meets next week. And so I would expect that we'll be getting an update, if not getting the actual report and having a discussion about it. That's my hope, anyway. And so once we have that, then we can also, you know, have a, have a better discussion around these numbers and sort of truthing these things out just a little bit, a little bit more. And I think my, my sense is that all the jurisdictions are kind of waiting for all of that to come together to, to feel better about where we are. There, there was, there's definitely some discussion going on about jurisdictions that may be changing their numbers or inflating them in some manner, changing them from what HBL has suggested. And the fact that they're going, if they're going to go that route, that they're going to have to produce some sort of justification, some kind of background for how they got there, that would go along with the report from the county. And so HBL has said that we'll be discussing that this Wednesday as well. So unfortunately, I'd like to be bringing a lot more concrete numbers to bear with y'all this time around again, but we just haven't gotten, just haven't gotten that far since we spoke last, because there hasn't been another Cities and Towns Geography meeting since, again, since we last spoke.
Thank you. So that was one of my questions. So you haven't had a small cities meeting, so that chart that we saw, that horizontal chart that we saw where some cities had filled in some numbers, that hasn't changed?
No, not since last time that you saw it. Those numbers have all been the same, except that they have looked at different persons per household, like I said. So there's been some different persons per household numbers thrown out there. But again, I think this Wednesday, I'm expecting to see that spreadsheet in full with all of those numbers included, so that we can really get to the nitty-gritty. So far, all we've seen is just kind of some draft numbers and how those persons per household might affect them.
So, did, did you say a little earlier that, that PSRC is wanting to have a more of a blanket number for persons per household?
No, not a blanket number, but they're looking at, so they've got, they've got numbers that are that are regional averages for persons per household. And so what HBL has done is looked at what that regional average was back in 2017 versus what PSRC is saying it's going to be in 2044, which is lower in 2044. And they're subtracting that difference from the persons per household numbers for each jurisdiction across the board to kind of show attrition, I suppose, over time. And I, you know, I don't think that that's necessarily a bad, a bad way to go, except that, you know, Katrina and I have had some discussions about this, and we feel that Gig Harbor's persons per household, you know, we're a little bit different in that our, we think the demographic is changing here just a little bit, and I think all of us would agree that that's, that's probably likely what's going on here. And that's probably going to be a continuing trend for us. Whereas other jurisdictions, it's not such a marked change like that. You know, maybe, maybe a couple of them are in the same camp, but, but not quite as much. And so even at that 2.2 number, we're still under what most of the other jurisdictions are for their average persons per household. So we think it's a, we think it's a reasonable ask.
What is the highest persons per household jurisdiction?
I think it's Bonnie Lake is showing the highest, and, and they've really inflated theirs, I think, up to, I want to say two and a half.
I think, I thought it was 2.46 or something last time, but.
Yeah, I think that's what they, I think that's what they were saying, and I don't think.
Bonnie Lake currently is at a 3 DPH. And in 2044, it was going to go down to 2.5.
Is that what it was? Yeah, I think that, I think you're right, Katrina.
So my last question is, the last thing you talked about was HBL coming up with increasing the numbers?
Increasing the, yeah, increasing the persons per household number. They did go back and do a new, they conducted a new calculation across the board that, that increased each of the jurisdictions' persons per household just slightly. So like I said, we were coming in at 2.16 when this process started for the 2044 planning horizon, and now we've been increased to 2.2. But again, like I said, they want to take that difference out of the average household size from PSRC and reduce, reduce them all then again by 0.12. So I put it at 0.08.
And then you said that by our meeting in May, you think that you will have some of those numbers filled in on that horizontal chart?
That's my hope, I'm hoping, I'm hoping sooner than that, to be honest. I mean, I would hope that we have something a little more concrete to discuss on Wednesday, rather than just sort of draft numbers. I, I'm really hoping that a lot of these jurisdictions that are throwing stuff against the wall are coming in with justification for how they're getting sort of, in a couple cases, really, really increased population growth shares.
Well, I mean, should, should we question them?
They're being questioned by HBL and the county, and like I said, if they're, if they're going to have those numbers, if they're going to come forward with those numbers, they're going to have to be providing some kind of justification to support them and how they're getting to, how they're arriving at those numbers.
Who, who are those cities?
There's a couple, Edgewood, Buckley, that are really increasing their growth rates. I think Bonnie Lake is actually dropping theirs down, kind of like Gig Harbor has, as far as the average growth rate percentages, so.
You mentioned.
More realistic look.
You mentioned Edgewood, and what was the other one?
Buckley.
Okay. Very good, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Other questions? If not, I'll ask my own here. On the persons per household, is there anything that we can do over and above to kind of get a, a jump on this thing before it jumps on us? The trickle-down from PSRC doesn't, doesn't give me a whole lot of confidence, to be quite honest. They, they don't like to look at the details. Somewhere, somewhere it stops right around the King County line, okay? Is where their field of vision ends. So my question there, is there anything we can do, is there anything I can do, for example, on PCRC to start really beating the drum hard on this, called, hey, this isn't right, it doesn't line up. Data-wise, you know, I'm, I'm looking here for what can we do to be proactive in this process rather than get stuck with something that we're not too happy with?
Well, I think, Councilmember Hives, I think we've been fairly proactive, we've been really communicative with the, with HBL, with Brittany Port, who's the, their project manager on this process. And, you know, and, and also with Pierce County. And, you know, I'm attending all of the meetings that are put out there. And we've even had a couple of additional meetings with HBL and the county to discuss this stuff. So we're, we are trying to be proactive and make sure that they know that we have a voice in this and we're concerned, and that we have an opinion, and we're going to have that opinion heard. So I, I don't know if there's any more twisting of the screws that could be done. I'm, I'm, I'm really hopeful that, again, I'm really hopeful that this meeting on Wednesday is going to be really enlightening and kind of get us, you know, from this sort of curvy path into something a little more centralized, so that we can really focus in on what, what it is Gig Harbor wants to do as far as, you know, taking, taking a number forward. But like I said, if, you know, looking at, looking at where we've, where we've been when the process started and where we are now, I think we're in a lot better place. They've definitely listened when all the jurisdictions came forward and said that this persons per household is the key. And we need it to be either higher or lower in some cases, depending on the jurisdiction. In our case, we wanted it higher, they listened, and we did get it, we did, we did get it raised. And I think that it gets us to afar, it seems to get us to afar, a far better place, I think, or at least a more realistic look at what that 2044 growth target share could be.
Okay, great. Yes, Councilmember Franch. Yes, so when are we, or when is the city of Gig Harbor going to put the number on the horizontal map?
Well, I guess that's something that we can, you know, we can discuss. I, you know, I was talking to Katrina about this before, and unfortunately, the timing of these meetings hasn't worked out well with our Planning and Building Committee meetings. We're at the beginning of the month, and then we have this, this meeting in between, and those meetings haven't ferreted out exactly the information that, you know, we need to get there. You know, I, I would, if, if I had my druthers, I would like to. Um, you know, I, I would, if, if I had my druthers, uh, I would like to say that we would be able to bring back. You know, a recommendation from staff to have a good discussion around at your May planning and building committee meeting. Now, if we, if I go to the cities and towns meeting that actually I should, I should mention that PSRC is planning to be at that meeting on Wednesday as well. Um, if I go to that meeting and they say. We need this number from all the jurisdictions now, or we're going forward with the recommendation, something along those lines and really start to play. You know, strong arm us in some manner. Then uh, you know, it may be that we need to have uh another planning and building committee, committee meeting. Potentially in the interim before your May meeting in order to uh make sure that we get. Um, a consensus between, you know.
As far, as far as that goes, thank you, Carl. I, I think that that would be highly unlikely that they would try to drive down within the next thirty days into a number. Noting that there's some significant discrepancies, as Carl mentioned, between Buckley and Edgewood and then with Bonnie Lake. In terms of their housing units and their persons per household. I think there's too many unknowns at this point that. I don't think the worry is there that we're going to be forced to put a number on paper. And as Carl mentioned, the persons per household for us is a very important portion of this equation. The other portion is our capacity. Our residential capacity that we still do not have yet from Pierce County. And those two items are really the final two um. Um, pieces of analysis that we need prior to making a professional recommendation. For what our number should be. And I think that, you know, as Carl mentioned, by your main meeting, um, and this is assuming that Pierce County will give us the capacity numbers that were promised by the end of March. If we're able to get those during April, that combined with the persons per households um successes that Carl's been able to achieve at. At his level, I think we would be able to have a number to propose.
Oh, well, before you propose that number to these different. Organizations, will we hear that number before you propose it to them?
Likely, yes. It will be within the range that we've talked about before. Um, it, it'll be, it'll be a timing issue, Councilmember Franch. I would like to be able to say a hundred percent that we will. Give it to you before we say, yes, a hundred percent for sure. Put us down. Yes, you will know. We're not going to give a definite before we're able to discuss it with the committee and with um the mayor and city administrator.
Okay, any other comments? And, and uh, I, I will check back with you, Carl. I, I would like to plant some seeds in the PCRC. Even if we can't argue about numbers. Uh, we uh, we're, 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 we're kind of favoring this, this type of scenario, okay? Um, a- as opposed to just waiting to get hit. Uh, and again, I, I'm not so concerned about the PCRC itself. I'm concerned about PSRC. Coming to the PCRC and saying, guys, we've changed our mind, okay? This, this is what we're talking about here. And I think it's well within their grasp, okay?
I think, Councilmember Heinz, one important piece of information that. Was sent on to Carl today that was forwarded to me is that it did not sound like PSRC was going to force. Um, another. Um, another regional geography's population onto us. I think Carl told you at the last meeting that the poorer cities within Pierce County. Were not agreeing to take their full allocation. And at that point, there was concerns that that then could cascade down to the. The cities and towns geographies. There's initial. Word from PSRC that that would not be what they would require. So it appears that within our geography, we are safe within the numbers that we did show you that one day. So we, there wouldn't be any drastic increases. That we should be concerned about at this point.
Okay, okay, good, good. Yeah, I'm just uh. A uh, quick offenses all will always be the best defense you can think of. Um, okay, with that comment, I will stop right there. Move right along if there's nothing else on the uh growth target allocation update. Thank you, Carol. Uh, you're also on here for the SHHAP and I'm not sure whether A stands for attainable or affordable.
In answer to that question, it, it stands for, for actually, it stands for both. Uh, so they've, they've decided that it will, that, that, that it means both. So it's. Uh, South Town Housing Affordable and Attainable Partners, so. Um, so yeah, on, 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 as far as that organization goes and the, the process uh that's been going down, uh, that's, that's moved real fast here. As of late, uh, so there has been a draft interlocal agreement now that's been circulated um. To uh, to jurisdictions. Uh, and so now those jurisdictions are checking the draft with um. But whatever process they decide to go through, their legal departments, generally speaking. Uh, since it is a, is a contract. And so we, we early on had a copy of that draft and we did present it to um. To uh, and I should say that that was released to the participating jurisdictions. Uh, on one hand, it was also released to um. To those jurisdictions that have not been participating to this point. Um, but that we hope will be participating. Um, so there were two cover letters that went out, same interlocal agreement in both, of course. Um, but kind of in some cases, I guess the reason I bring that up is that it's uh, it's, it's really kind of. In some cases, might be an introduction to some of those um jurisdictions that haven't been involved to this point. Councilmember Franch?
Yeah, well, the, you know, I just heard the word contract and that's kind of scares me, but so, I mean. All along, I thought that this is a voluntary uh. Process, so there's nothing in this contract language that you just used that's. Mandating anything, is there?
Well, it would only mandate the terms of the agreement um for as long as the agreement is valid. The interlocal agreement and there are opportunities written into the agreement uh for jurisdictions to opt out. At certain points if they wanted to. So it's a, I think it's fairly standard language for uh, for, for interlocal agreements. That allow for jurisdictions to get out of those agreements at some point if they chose to.
Ri- right, but it's not imposing some sort of um. I guess mandate where you have to do certain things. Thought we were voluntarily participating in this to see how it's. You know.
That's correct, Councilmember Franch. It's a, it's a voluntary intergovernmental agreement that the city would enter into with the other jurisdictions. For the primary purpose of creating this. Organization or this executive director that will work on affordable or attainable housing issues for all of us. It's, there's nothing that we're signing on to that we agree to X, Y, or Z. Um, policy or code.
Very good. Thanks, Katrina. Um, so uh, so back to uh, the point I was making then, uh. Daniel has reviewed the draft. At this point, we've sent it on to Daniel for a legal review. Uh, he's looked it over the fine tooth comb and he didn't have any uh, any problems with it and I'm, and, and I say, you know, he was looking for things. Uh, such as what Councilmember Franch was um concerned with, with the, uh, with your question there. So. He didn't find anything in there that um, we put the city in harm's way. Uh, and so what we're waiting on right now is other jurisdictions. We're kind of, we're a little bit ahead of the game because uh Mayor Kuhn has been so involved in the, in the process. Um, but so we're waiting on other jurisdictions now. To have their legal departments review it or put it through whatever process they're going to put it through. Before we bring it back to the full council and that would be then the next step. So we don't want to go and bring it to full council. Uh, and then we find that there's been some substantive changes. Made or proposed by other jurisdictions and we have to bring it back to you multiple times. Um, so. That's kind of uh, that's where we're at in the process currently.
Is it possible, is it possible to uh, for you to send us a copy of this?
Uh, I can if um. If that's, if that, yeah, I, I, I can certainly do that.
Are we, is that? Is it still a work, work in progress, though?
Well, it is. I think we would have to say uh, it's a good point, Mayor, that, you know, we'd have to. Say with the caveat that there could still be substantive cha- substantive changes made to that document. Um, uh, as suggested by other legal departments throughout the um, throughout the county, so. Um, but yeah, certainly as long as everyone understands that it's still, this is still early stage format, uh, draft format.
So either, either uh, we can send it to you, but just put draft over it, or if you want to wait just a little longer. Then we can solidify it more. Um. What do you think, Katrina?
I think the um, I think the approach you've discussed would work. I believe it does say draft on it, but I think Carl could put a draft watermark on it with. And then everyone just realizes on the committee that it's, it's not formal until we submit it in a council bill.
Great.
Great, great. Yeah, I figured send it out to the committee and agree.
Okay, I'll get that over to you guys uh, this afternoon.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on the uh, SSSHAP?
The shape, shape.
Okay, if not, we will move right along to.
I do, one thing, I do have a meeting on that, um. I think it's Wednesday with uh, with the group and they'll be probably. Bring, probably finalizing it so we can bring it to council again. Um, I believe this group uh supported it. Is that correct in the past? Great. I mean, it's a, we get, we get the same vote as people that pay hundreds and hundreds of thousands, so. It's uh very beneficial. And again, it's just a, a tool that we can use, but it doesn't have to be used. Thank you.
Very good.
I thought you'd like that Councilmember Franch.
Two thumbs up. Okay, moving right along, council comments. Uh, I guess I'd like to lead off with the, the variance thing that I mentioned. Uh. I, I had gone through a uh. A variance application, only part of the application, actually, it's just a two pager. And uh, was kind of picked my interest uh on, on setbacks. And without discussing specifically that item, I guess I'd like to, to uh, get into a more general discussion on the variance process. And I think uh, Katrina sent out a uh letter. That included basically all the information about. Type two and type three, if I remember correctly, uh permit applications. And the process they went through and the criteria that was utilized. Uh, in evaluating those particular uh variance requests. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Katrina, and we'll kind of see where this goes. Um. Very, very interesting and, and, and uh. It, to be quite honest, uh, what really picked my attention is I, I couldn't believe somebody could be off by thirty-five percent. On a rear setback. I just, that just floored me, all that, holy smokes. Um, that's what we pay engineers and surveyors and designers big money for. How could you miss something by thirty-five percent? So that's what picked my interest in this whole thing, uh, called, hmm, how did that happen and why didn't we? Why wasn't it not caught, for example, at a final plat? Level, okay? Why does it get to this stage? So um, with that, I, I will turn it over to you, Katrina. Um, like I say, that was, that was my interest, okay?
A little bit of a loaded question at the end there, Councilmember. But um, yes, I did send an email to all the committee members on Wednesday at five oh two. Believe, oh no, that was when Councilmember Heinz responded to me. So it'd be Wednesday, the thirty-first at four twenty-eight is when I sent it. And the first clarification I made there in, in my email response back was there's clear code language. Of when our staff can deem an application complete. And by staff deeming an application complete, that does not necessitate approval or even support by staff. It. This simply is a legal mechanism for us to say that all required materials were submitted for our review. And that, from that date, it sets on its path of a hundred and twenty days that we have to get from. When we receive it to the end. Um, the next item of. That I put out in the email for discussion was just the breakdown of variances. And I'll quickly address Councilmember Heinz's comment regarding um platted lots. You know, this is a question, this is the second time that we've received this question. And when we go through a plating process, we. Look at what the uh lot size requirements are and the planners will review the lots for if they meet. Um, you know, lot depth, lot width. Um, and again, it's dependent on the code at the time, which previously could be reduced through um a PRD or a planned residential development. For certain um. Other provisions. That's no longer in our code. However, the, the plat that I think necessitated or had this email go out is um. Was under, was not utilizing that. So in terms of that, we review the final plat to ensure that the lot sizes are consistent with our code. Now, if that plat is then sold to someone else. And they want to put a certain home product on that lot. That may not fit. That's kind of where this comes into account. This is, this is not a, our staff did anything wrong in reviewing. A final plat or making that recommendation. So I just want to make that clarification. Uh, within the code under seventeen sixty-six oh two oh, there are two ways that variances can be processed. One is administratively. In which uh, I would be the final decision maker on that and in. It, I can, it's for a decrease of not more than twenty percent of a required width. Front uh rear yard or yard between buildings, not more than ten percent. Uh permitted, projection of harnesses, sills, eve projections, et cetera. Or an increase of not more than five percent of the maximum permitted building height. So those are things that. My staff can review for my um, for my decision. Administratively and essentially that means it doesn't have to go to the hearing examiner. There is notice to property owners, which is why you all received the notice or. Come from behind received the notice, it sounds like. Now with that, it's, our code is also prescriptive in. Telling us as staff and reviewers what we have to review. The applications based on. So it's not just subjective to what, you know, Katrina thinks today or Katrina thinks tomorrow. And so in, in the email I've put in there as well. Um, the criteria for an administrative variance, the variance is an immediate remedy to a condition not readily apparent during construction. Of the structure, um, two, a strict application of the standards would impose an unreasonable hardship, hardship. Three, the need for a variance is not the result of deliberate actions of the applicant or property owner. And four, the variance does not create the health safety standards. Now, with this discussion here, I'm not going to be evaluating those criteria based on the NOA that was received because it would not be proper. Um, I'm just giving you the information today about what type of variance and then what we currently evaluate them on. Um, general variances can be reviewed by the hearing examiner. This does require a public hearing and a more formal public notice. And um. So it would be basically for any other variances above the threshold that I'm allowed to do. Or given the responsibility in the coach to administratively. And under a general variance, I will say that the criteria for review is higher. Um, in order to vary over those percentages. And so with this, it is that the proposed variance will not amount to a rezone or authorize any use not allowed in the district. Two, special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar, which are. Curious to the land set such as size, shape, geography, location. Not applicable to other land in the same district and a literal interpretation of the provisions of the title. Would deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by other property, properties similarly situated in the same district. Three, the special conditions and circumstances do not result in actions from the applicant. Four, granting of the variance requested will not confer a special privilege that is denied to other lands in the same district. Five, the granting of a variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity or zone. And the hearing examiner shall further make a finding that the reasons set forth in the application justify the granting of the variance. So with both of these applications, our code gives us what it is and they give us the, what we're supposed to. So with both of these applications, our code gives us what it is and they give us the, what we're supposed to analyze it against. Oftentimes throughout the history, Carl, you can shake your head, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been more instances where the variances go forward, not necessarily agreeing to all criteria. And a lot of variances through our history have been denied based on not being able to meet those criteria. Um, again, I won't do that on this meeting, so it wouldn't be proper to analyze those, but there are two variances that are currently being, uh, that have been applied for and received complete application in the North Creek plat. One of them is administrative and one of them is a general variance. So one of them is requesting over twenty percent of a reduction of a rear yard setback. And so my staff will be reviewing those applications consistent with how they are, how it's laid out, the process is laid out in the code and we will process them as such. Council member Heinz, you're on mute.
Council member Franch, do you have a question? Yes. So Katrina is uh, since that, that property has changed hands many times, or at least twice, um, is the new owner considered the applicant or veritas the new owner and the applicant, whoever applied for that layout is considered the applicant?
The applicant would be who can legally sign the permit application as the owner or owner's agent.
Well, well. Well, that, that was platted under a different applicant.
That's correct.
So does the new owners become the applicant or is it still? I don't know if I'm, I probably not conveyed my question in the right manner for you to understand, but um, is the new owner bound by the original applicant's layout?
Generally, they are. Um. Yes, they are bound by all the final plat conditions. However, as they now own the property, they now have the legal um, authority to be the applicant. So the new owner is the applicant for this variance process.
Okay. And do you happen to know, just off the top of your head, what the lot dimensions are for the one that was requesting the eleven foot?
I don't, I'm sorry. I could have um, the planner get back to you on that.
No, that's okay. Um, so that was permitted under a PRD?
Carl was the planner on that project, so I will let him answer that.
No, uh, this is North Creek. Am I, am I correct, Katrina?
Yeah.
We're talking about, yeah. No, that was not, it was not a PRD. But it was, it's an older plat, so it was done uh, we, when we had um, minimum and maximum densities. Requirements.
So is, is that why I, I, I'm assuming that under our, our new codes that some of those lots would not be permitted?
I think that's, that's likely correct. Oh, sorry, Katrina, you were about to answer.
Oh, you go ahead.
Uh, I think that's likely correct. Um, because uh, we've, we've increased uh, lot sizes. So we've changed um, quite a bit of the development regulations that would um, would preclude some of the sizes and shapes of some of those lots. And also, you know, the minimum density is, was, is a factor, right, in this and that they had to meet a certain density. Uh, and, and, and so our code had to allow for that. And so, um, and so our uh, development standards then would, you know, made, made um, up, created the ability for them to make smaller lots in order to get them into the site. I don't know, I, that didn't come out right, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I, I understood you completely. I mean, because, you know, the, the, we have a new method on what were gross versus uh, net buildable acreage. So I, I think that they were, the way we were doing it before, calculated it on gross acreage, allowed them to get those smaller lots in there, so.
Yeah, the code has been amended to increase uh, lot sizes. It's been amended to take out some additional reductions for buffers and things like that. And then what Carl was stating with the code having a, previously having a minimum and where you had to be above a minimum and below a maximum density. The, this plat was required to have eighty-one. I think that was the minimum that they could do. Uh, and so they had to create the, the lots in accordance to achieve that density. And that, that no longer is in our code.
Any other questions? Yeah, not, not on that specifically, but just in general with, with variances. Um, did we ever, and I know you've been busy, Katrina, but did we ever get anywhere in uh, determining with the, with Daniel on precedents, and I'm referring back to the Bay Ridge variances where, you know, everybody down the street got the variance, uh, so therefore there's precedent for variances. And that Seattle Yacht Club case was uh, clearly contrary to that belief that our hearing examiner has been going by. So i- is that conversation just kind of died off or?
I wouldn't say that it has died off. I, I appreciate acknowledging that how busy staff are. It is something that is on the to-do list to do with Daniel. Um, and I, as I put at the bottom of my email to you guys, uh, to the committee, we can always review the code and amend code if it's um, what the majority of council wishes. And so when we come forward for, you know, we're hoping to start, you know, budget discussions in May, June and talk through with this committee and look at work plans for twenty twenty-two and, you know, into twenty twenty-three. If this is something that's important to the majority of council, then I would suggest that we get that on our work plan so that we have dedicated staff time to work on this. But no, it has not um, died, but it is still on the list to do.
Thank you. Yeah, following up on that, that, that point, um. I, I personally think it's a big deal. Um, we put a code out there and then variances come up and it's like a, it's like a leak in the boat called, oh my gosh, we thought we had this thing square away and then all of a sudden stuff like, some of these things come in. And uh, so yeah, I, I think it's a big deal. The other thing is the, the, the criteria, and that was the other question I had. Uh, do we as a municipality have flexibility in terms of uh, modifying or enhancing the criteria that is used to evaluate these things? In other words, I, I understand the, the, for example, the hearing examiner is going to that same criteria that you just mentioned, okay? Uh, but that criteria is set by, I'm assuming to a good, to a good chunk, the city. Is that correct?
That is correct. And so there are certain legal bounds that we'll need to go by, such as case law, and we cannot be inconsistent with state law, for instance. But in terms of how we craft the language, you know, as is with most codes, the county or the city, we do have the you know, we do have the ability to amend the code. And then once that's done, any new applications for that specific type would be reviewed against that moving forward. We can't um, post facto review uh, projects against older code or newer code.
Yeah.
So there are legal statutes, you know, statutes for that. But yes, that, the, the code can be amended in terms of what could be allowed under administrative review, you know, that threshold can be looked at as well as the criteria that we look at in reviewing the variance requests.
Okay.
The one question, Bob, and I may, I had to get a call, so maybe you covered this. You know, Bob Larson pointed out to me, which is true, that we're all going to have to be aware of is, you know, our simple land is already built. So the, you know, it's, it's the tougher topography that we're dealing with now. So this is going to be challenged over and more and more again because they're going to get these lots and there's going to be a certain size and then they're gonna, then they're gonna want to amend it. And so council is going to have, council and staff is going to have to make a clear direction of where they want to go.
I agree. Absolutely agree. Um, the, the other question was in terms of criteria. Um, the, the in this case, particularly the uh, the, the offset issues, um. You're, you're getting into impervious surfaces in particular. Uh, when you get way out there toward the, toward the edges of the lot. And if I remember correctly, council member Markley, you brought up some issues and if I remember correctly, in McCormick Creek, where people couldn't build patio blocks in their backyard. Few other things because they were already at the impervious service, surface limit. And if they added to it, they would go over it, okay? And uh, here's this poor person buys a house, but he can't build a patio in the back. And my, my sense was they didn't even know it when they bought the house, okay, that this thing was restricted in that manner. They don't find it out till they try to get a permit for a, a um, a patio out there. So.
Yeah, don't get me started. It's another hour of conversation minimum.
Wow, that's what I'm trying to avoid is, is another hour of conversation called. Uh, are those the kind of things that we ought to be thinking about uh, in terms of going forward and um, to, to avoid any, any issues on this? And by the way, thi- this also goes back to the self-policing aspect, uh, but I think you mentioned the onset, uh, Katrina, where we basically approve the lot. But in terms of the house model that goes on that lot, that's strictly the, the um, uh, developers. I, so I, I must, uh, I must say, I uh, if that's the case, and I agree with that, by the way, then the burden is on the developer, one hundred and twenty percent. It's not on the city. Uh, we approved the lot and you guys went and stuck this thing on there, okay, or want to stick this thing on there. So I, I, I realize that may be a little hard, hard-nosed approach, but it's honest, called, hey, we didn't look at it and we didn't evaluate it. And it's their baby and in terms of, yeah, here's the lot and they got this lineup of houses they want to potentially stick on there. Um, that's their call. Uh, and they got to live with it, okay? So.
For the record, there is, I, I won't be unable to talk about these things uh, with this committee and on the record because that is part of the professional analysis that will occur.
Agree, agree. Okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad we're clear on that one point as far as the, the city is not reviewing these things on the final plat, okay, in terms of what house model goes on there and what these setbacks really are. Okay, that's a big deal. That's a, that's a huge deal. Um. Uh, and, and I, and I'm not suggesting that we should be looking at, but uh, it. Let's just say it influences one's thinking. Okay, any other question? And by the way, I think what we're leading for, you know, I, I, I can't speak for council member Markley and council member Franch, you can chime in anywhere you want here. But I think a discussion of this in the May meeting would be definitely um, a good item. Um, not only from the pressures that the mayor was bringing up, but I also see, boy, if it takes all of this work to get one of these things through. Uh, and some of these things, um, without referencing any specific item, um, I looked at a couple of them and they would have been on the cutting room floor in a heartbeat, called, what are we doing here? This is, this is, you know, and I know legally we're bound to certain processes, okay? But uh, I, I'd be also interested in uh, in what kind of time we're investing in these various variances from a staff standpoint, okay? Following up on these things, uh, because I'm sure there's a lot of activity based on the notices that I've seen. So.
Talking about a general variance discussion or this particular project, the North Creek project?
General, general.
General.
Yeah, there's um, I, I know you cancel a lot of hearing examiner meetings, but uh, even then, uh, that's still a lot of activity there. Uh, that we're supporting, okay? So, just, just my feelings, I don't know. Um, I, I think it would be a worthwhile thing in May for us to go through this thing in some detail to the extent that we can. And I, I'm empathetic to, to the uh, issues here morally and legally, et cetera. Yeah, council member Franch. Well, that's kind of why I brought up that question about um, where we were at on interpretations of one guy gets the variance and then the next guy gets it because it's set precedent. So, um, I'm and I'm sensitive to Katrina's, what's going on there as well. So she kind of said that uh, I mean, I, I, I'm more than happy to, to have the discussion, but I don't know how fruitful it would be. Maybe Katrina could make that decision on whether or not we would be able to, to get anywhere, discussion it further, but, but I, I firmly think that uh, the whole idea of variances is something that, that does need to be discussed. Um, and especially in light of that, the way the hearing examiner interprets things is I, I, and this is just from my reading of some of his decisions that a lot of weight gets put on that if the, if the neighbor gets it, you got a pretty good chance of getting it yourself because the neighbor got it. And I, I could be totally off base on that, but reading some hearing examiner decisions, it seems like there's a, a, some pretty heavy weight that goes towards uh, that rationale.
Council member Heinz, if you would be I, I appreciate what council member Franch just said and just looking at workload realistically, it would be, probably be hard pressed to bring you something in May. Um. Maybe the June, July timeframe, then I can have the time to work with Daniel and actually have something that's fruitful rather than I, I don't want to waste time, waste your time either.
No, I, I, I agree. I agree. I, I think that would definitely be worthwhile, definitely worthwhile. And the, the, the point that council member Franch is uh, is, is, I think it weighs on all of us called, these are variances to the codes that we and you in particular, put a lot of thought into, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And uh, all it takes is one. And uh, if precedence is a significant issue, uh, things like uh, criteria may, uh, other criteria may, may fall back in the list of importance relative to uh, decisions. So um, it's a, it's, it's an item of a lot of interest, let's put it that way. And there's a, it's um, at least from my perception, it's, it can potentially be a big risk that starts out very small and ends up being something big, something different than one you thought you had. So I'll leave it right there. So June, July would be great. That'd be super, appreciate it. And hopefully we didn't get you in too much trouble. Okay, great. Uh, let's see, any other council comments? Okay, with that, I think I would entertain a uh, motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fantastic. Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.